I have heard of all the meeting orders.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Updugrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada. Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mr. Panarela.
Here.
All present.
Go rise for the pleasure leaders.
The United States of America, and consider Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing justice for all.
Board of school directors had an executive session Tuesday, January 24th. Topic was collective bargaining. The meeting lasted 105 minutes. We also had one prior to this meeting, Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. And the topic was personnel, and it lasted approximately 30 minutes. BCIU, Lisa, do you have a report?
Yeah, so I believe it is coming up next Tuesday. We have a COLA meeting, so it's a Committee on Legislative Action. I will bring back whatever we, you know, our discussion and information for the board from there. And attached to our newsletter was the BCIU budget, so that's all for me.
Ms. Robgrove, BCTC.
Yes, but at this time, I'll save it for the next meeting.
All right, Mr. Manarela, I will lead off with Policy 006. Policy 006 is the policy committee, a board, I'm sorry. It is for meetings, and there was a request by a board member to make an addition to this policy. It is the only thing that would be asked to be changed, and it is under the part of meetings with respects to the superintendent's report, and it falls under the consent agenda items. The request is to add a piece on, at this part of the policy to allow for any board member to make a request to have something moved from the consent item, agenda to the itemized agenda, and that request would have to be made by noon on the Monday where the board agenda is being posted. So it would have to be prior to the posting of the agenda. So if you were reviewing Policy 006, it's on page five of the 15-page document. It's under number 11, under Order of Business, and it would be 11A. Currently, it reads consent agenda, which includes routine committee reports, board meeting minutes, and other non-controversial items, not requiring discussion or independent action in one agenda item. School board member may, the addition that's being requested reads that a school board member may request an item be moved from the consent agenda to the itemized agenda no later than noon of the day of the agenda being posted to the public. So this would be up for discussion.
So under the impression that no individual board member has authority to do anything, has to be by a group or a majority, are we now saying that that's no longer the case, that one board member can make a request on their own and do something without any board support? Because that's a bad precedent.
What is the wording that's being proposed?
A school board member may request an item to be moved from the consent agenda to the itemized agenda no later than noon of the day of the agenda being posted to the public.
The way that reads, in my opinion, is that one individual board member can make a request to move something from a consent agenda item and the like. So it's subject to, so to speak, veto by one board member.
Thank you. Yeah, so the issue here, in my opinion, is that the consent agenda, when we're reading Robert's Rules of Order, the consent agenda specifically is only for items that are deemed non-controversial. Non-controversial items, I think we can all kind of, we all know what those would be, right? Minutes, things like that.
That's wrong, no, that's
Okay, that's fine. However, in the past, there were some items placed on the consent agenda that were controversial and that a lot of discussion took place around. When I asked to have those items removed, I was told no, because we already discussed them at length, which was true, we did discuss them at length. However, my argument here is that if we, as a board, no longer wish to discuss an item, there is procedure within Robert's Rules of Order to end discussion and call for a vote. I think it's really important that board members be able to say, this item makes me uncomfortable on the consent agenda, and therefore I'm requesting that it gets moved to the itemized agenda. And I think that's pretty simple. So I don't think any board member should be forced to vote no to a consent agenda because they object to one particular item. That's why I asked for this revision. Thank you.
The reason we started even the discussion about this was I had voted no to a whole assent agreement because I didn't like a particular item in there. And I agreed with all the other, but the only way to get it was to get it removed, all those consent items. Now, all we're doing is we're taking it from the group and making it into an individual. It's not that we're not going to discuss it, and it's not going to be not brought up in the current, current meeting. So we're just asking that it be brought up and separated if there's an issue with somebody on this board, and everybody should have their opinion, and if it's something that shouldn't be there, then move it, and we'll discuss it more. That's what the reason was, we, we thought we could change this.
I have to agree with that because I've already voted no because of one item on the consent agenda and got chastised by some people in the community, and it had nothing to do with the whole part of it, it was just one item. So if there's something on there that a board member feels they need to discuss, they should have that right.
If a board member can convince a few other board members that that is an item to be moved on the consent agenda, then it's not a consensus opinion to move it. We could then, if this is the case, we could then might as well get rid of the consent agenda, because anybody at any time can something removed for no reason other than I think it's controversial. That's not the way we need to conduct business, and that's not really Robert's rules.
So again, this is, this is a parliamentary thing, in my opinion. We're talking, the consent agenda clearly states only for non-controversial items. It even says that in our policy. So again, this is, I feel like this is for the protection of all board members. It has nothing to do with who is or is not in leadership, or who is or is not a board majority. It really just protects everyone from having to vote for or against things that they are, that they have issue with. So that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
So I, I agree with that, and the fact that you're removing it from the consent agenda, it's still going to be on the itemized agenda, it's still going to be discussed, and it's still going to be voted on. So I don't think there's a whole lot of controversy here if a board member feels that, hey, this is going to be a lot of discussion. Probably wouldn't have a hard time getting a couple more people to agree with them, but I don't see the reason of going through all that trouble, just moving it to the itemized and, you know, having the discussion there. We're still going to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
There's nothing to keep you from moving it to the itemized agenda. You have to do is get other board members to agree with you. Once again, we're moving to a single board member now has authority to make a change, and that's not what boards are supposed to work under.
To, to move what?
From the consent agenda.
Three.
Three.
Three, yeah. Now, the issue is, what is a definition, what is the definition of a controversial versus a non-controversial item? Does one out of nine people make it controversial? That's your basis to interpret. Two out of nine, clearly six out of nine would make it very controversial, but something short of that is something that you probably need to define, given the nature of the debate that you're having right now. Because I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if one out of nine people makes it controversial or not.
So just for clarity, I'm sorry. So if you have something on the consent agenda, and three persons object to it being there, that is enough to move it down to the itemized agenda?
That is correct.
Because that is what we had in, in August, and that, that item was not moved.
Correct.
That is true. There was three of us who objected to it being on there, and it was not moved.
Was it brought to an official vote? Has it been brought to the floor, Lisa?
Okay, well, if that's
If we want to talk about Robert's rules and procedures.
Okay, Mr. Hemingway, I'll, I'll check, I'll check the video, Mr. Hemingway. I appreciate it, thank you.
Just try to clarify that for me.
Okay, thank you.
So my request is, do I have support to move this to a first reading? Or not?
So I don't move.
I, I'm in seconds.
So are we going to keep, I have a question. Are we keeping it in then?
No, we'd have to vote.
Right. Yes, the, the, it would stay in, and it would have to come to first reading for a vote.
The new changes will stay in?
Correct. Unless I'm, unless there's not enough support here saying that the changes stay.
Thumbs up for that, or thumbs down?
So we just, you just need direction, thumbs up, thumbs down for the first reading?
I do need direction.
For the first reading, that thumbs up, thumbs down?
With the language as it's currently drafted.
Correct. Not after what you just said, no.
I gotta trust what you're saying, if it's okay.
We're asking a legal opinion, and we don't need to tell them.
I'm okay with the three, if it's, where is it in your stated though?
No, I think we should, you know, my recommendation is, given the ambiguity, that maybe we add language to the effect that three, do we have language in there for three individuals?
No, I wasn't aware of the three, so if that's the way it is, then it should be specified.
I agree, and it makes it much easier to administer.
So how do we move forward? Can we give direction on, let's take that to say three?
Okay, right now, well, yes, right now, I've just, we had a thumbs up, thumbs down, I didn't do, I didn't look this way, and, you know. Well, I just want to know what the vote was.
I don't think it might, if, because I'm the person that brought it up, I would be fine, I would be fine with the three, if it's specified in the policy.
Well, yeah, that's what the policy has already stated, that's what we followed from the beginning.
It doesn't spell it out.
It does not.
It does not spell it out.
So we can make it more specific, I think that's fair. Yeah, more specifics, it's very fair, yeah.
If we can even make it more specific to say that if three people
Three board members.
Three board members contact the board president via email or whatever, it gets moved.
I don't even think we need to go that far, do I just think it
Well, we, we tried this once before, and it didn't work.
I would suggest if it's on the consent agenda, and it's brought up publicly in front of the meeting, if somebody has an objection to that, we go through the procedure. If there's three, if there's two other board members who, who vote yes, we agree that this should come off the consent agenda, so we can discuss it further. I think that publicly is saying, here's what, how we feel. If you don't have that, two other people, then it stays as is. I, I don't see how much more clear we can be on that. We're fair.
I think the, the question that I'm hearing is whether or not, prior to the actual board meeting, you can take something off the consent agenda in advance. And if that's the case, what is the form of communicating that, so we know what to do under the circumstances? Or we just simply wait until the board meeting, it is on the consent agenda, and at the board meeting, if, which we can measure that a lot more clearly, we can then remove it from the consent agenda at the board meeting. So I think the issue is whether you want to have a process that, prior to the board meeting, removes something from the consent agenda. If that's the case, then you do need to specify who you communicate that to, and I think probably for the purposes of tracking that, it's probably best that we do have a paper trail by having some form of email or communication that goes to either the superintendent, the board president, or the board secretary.
So I have that, the request from three school board members.
A request.
Yes, a request from three school board members to move an item from the consent agenda to the itemized agenda to superintendent or designee in writing no later than noon of the day of the agenda being posted to the public, something
Yeah, we may want to do a little bit more precise wordsmithing, but the effect is that you need a minimum of three board members
Right.
to move something from an already posted consent agenda
Right.
to the individual action item agenda. The question is, how would the three board members communicate, whether that's communicated before the meeting or at the meeting?
I'm suggesting that it's being communicated prior to the posting of a agenda to the public, so that, so that it doesn't appear that, you know, after noon, that there's something that's being done after it's been publicized.
Okay, so we have to post 24 hours in advance, under state law, so the objection to the consent agenda by the three board members would have to be received by the district administration, at least, what?
No later than noon.
No later than noon on
The day before noon.
The Friday, the, no, the
The Monday.
The Monday before the board meeting. And it, it needs to be communicated via email.
Mm-hmm. I captured that.
Okay. One thing, I do believe the best person that can go to would be the superintendent, because that's, that's the person that last sees the agenda.
Correct.
So it would be the best place to make the change, and then notify the rest of the board members.
And I would suggest that the email would incorporate the superintendent's secretary, because she's really the person who is making
And maybe as a matter of courtesy, and this is really up to you, I really think that if one board member communicates, the entire board should know that
Right.
you know, individually, if I'm going to write, if I'm a board member, I'm going to write an email to Superintendent Torscha and say, I want this off, that you should copy the rest of the board, and maybe we say that as part of the policy.
Yeah.
You email, you copy, because you, we work as a board, and that way you communicate with everybody. Because then it would avoid, you know, if I was a board member, I would wonder, perhaps, if it's a really controversial issue or something like that, I might want to verify who said it and the like, at least if I see the email, I'll know it.
We just have to be real careful that, that this email exchange doesn't turn into a deliberation before the meeting. So as long as it's an announcement that I have an objection, and then we can actually deliberate and talk about it in the meeting, but any kind of chatter back and forth, we're not, we're not doing that with email.
Not deliberating over the action item, and you don't need to justify your reason.
Right, we're just notifying, there's three of us, here's what we're doing, and we'll hash it out here, we're not doing it over emails, because that'll get us in trouble.
All right, I will bring this back for a first reading with the language assigned. All right, moving on to, are we done with?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Moving on to the discussion of Policy 123.2, sudden cardiac arrest. There is language that is being added under training, that we are going to be requiring all coaches to complete CPR training and become CPR certified. That is the only addition. It is something that will be provided through the athletics department in conjunction with our trainers in lieu of recent events. We believe that rather than waiting for the PIAA or PAC to make a decision that we wanted to be ahead of the curve with respects to making sure that people are adequately trained with CPR. They do, all coaches do annually, prior to coaching and athletic activity, they do complete the sudden cardiac arrest training course, but that is not inclusive of being CPR trained. So the direction I'm seeking is to be able to bring that policy forward for a first reading at the next board meeting.
Hogan moves. Oh, sorry. Apology, please.
Do we have discussion before the vote, or no?
I'm not looking for a vote, I'm just looking for a direction, but you can have this
Please, please ask questions, yep.
I apologize. Got my question. Oh, do they have to have the certificate before they apply for the position? I would hope.
No, they do not.
Why?
Well, because we're putting it in as part of something that we feel we should train and make sure that everyone is receiving that same training.
What if they didn't?
If they, if they would be certified, trained, perfect. If they have the certificate to show us, then they don't have to go through the retraining until it would be time to recertify.
What if something freaky happened, and they didn't pass? They couldn't do it, and we already hired them, that's
Yeah, we would have to look at that. Obviously, I can't tell you that I have been made aware of anyone not doing that or, or being successful, but we would have to evaluate if you wouldn't be capable of doing it, and you're the only person that would be with a group of students, and something happened, and, you know, they're, the trainers are not at every practice and every event, so, you know, we do believe that it would be very beneficial.
Going into that, one, I think we can make a part of the contract, but shouldn't we also involve any kind of field trips or anything like that, where a teacher would be taking the choir to, like, we're going to be voting on shortly, and something happens, should that, should these particular teachers or advisors be trained?
Well, we're looking at athletics because of, in light of the NFL football player, which has, you know, made national headlines and has come forth, but we're hearing that, we're not hearing that students are having same type of cardiac risk. Not that playing the instrument can't be stressful, or something couldn't happen, but it's just the means of, of what happens in contact sports.
Are we doing like an advanced first aid CPR course, or just a CPR course, or, I mean, because there could be other issues involved with it?
It would be the full training that is encompassed with CPR training. It, it would be what nurses have to receive, it would be what the EMT receive, it is the universal training for CPR. We already have the devices to be working on and the equipment, so
Most of them are pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, but, but yes, it, it's encompassing, and things have changed. I have not personally been CPR trained for quite a while, but my understanding is that, you know
Constantly changing.
It, it has changed, and they have minimized some of the first aid types of things, you know, application of Band-Aid is pretty understood now. And we do also do training on Stop the Bleed program, so, yep. And for, for the sake of the audience and everyone sitting here, I know that there has been concern raised with regards to AEDs, and I do want to let you know that we have been very fortunate to be the recipients of 16 brand-new AEDs that are being pushed out throughout the district with some additional ones on site. So there has been a major backwater in everything AED, whether it was replacement batteries, pads, et cetera, and we have gotten the latest equipment. So we're pretty well set there. I will move this forward then for the first, oh, I'm sorry. Is this something that they will receive every year? I know, like, nurses, they, they go through this every year, they get the reminder, they go through the CPR training every year. Is this something you would do as a whole for all your coaches at some point, or is this just once they get it, they're done? No, we would continue to maintain their credential, their certification, so as renewals would come up in each season, but prior to coaches going to coach, that would be, you know, it's not, you know, back in the day, it used to be, you know, a full eight-hour day, it is not an eight-hour day, I believe it is less than that. So yes, it would, we would make sure that your, your certificate was up to date and current. So how long does a certificate run, per year, for two years? I, I want to say that they're two-year, but I'm, you know, to, somebody's giving me a peace sign out there and saying two years, so I, I was pretty sure it was two. Yeah. That's good. Yeah. Yeah, no, no. All right, next we are going to be discussing Policy 702, 707, which is use of school facilities. And the policy was discussed, the policy was discussed at a previous meeting quite a while ago, and I had made the recommended changes to the policy with respects to some language in there, and just to, to review, just need to, here we go. Just to review Policy 707, we were moving forward to remove some language within the policy that had to do with, you know, having a minimum number of people participating. We've removed that portion of it. We changed some language with respects to having security versus police, or police verse, or, yeah, security versus police, because we do use security. And we also had added some prohibited activities, so under that portion of the policy, we added that, we added on to, there would be no use of tobacco or vape products, obviously gambling chance, gambling games, chance, lotteries, raffles, those other small games of chance would not be allowed, conduct that would constitute a violation of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code and our state federal laws, contact that would alter damage or be injurious, possession of weapons, and possession to use or distribute illegal drugs. So the fee schedule and the rules, which are the administrative regulations, are the bigger items that are, you know, for discussion yet. So Administrative Regulation 0 is specific to the use, the, the rules for use of school facilities, and under the user groups, I had been looking at other school district policies. I came across I came across one that I believed really captured how to best identify user groups. So I am recommending through this administrative regulation that the school affiliated groups and organizations be named, you know, the following. We would say, number one would be a school affiliated group and organization. Those are folks that are directly affiliated with the school district, whose primary purpose is to support the curricular and co-curricular programs of the school district, including parent, teacher groups, sports boosters, music league. The fees, there would be no facility use fee, only district rate for custodial and other personnel services and may be necessary for their use of facility. There shall be no charge for custodial services if the event is scheduled during normal custodial hours. The next group would be identified as a school-related youth group. Those are organizations providing services to the youth of school districts, including Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, BAWA, which is our wrestling association, Optimist Boyer Town Legionette Twirlers, Boyer Town Midget Baseball, Boyer Town Soccer Club, Boyer Town Ice Hockey Club, Camp Invention, et cetera. The, where those people have been identified from are, these are the groups that have been using our facilities on a regular basis. They have been charged, some have been charged, some have not been charged. We are of the belief that if you're going to be utilizing our building and you're falling into any other group outside of specific school affiliated groups, that we need to be accountable for, you know, some fees associated with using our buildings. The next group is considered a community group within the school district. This includes for not-for-profit service and community groups located within the boundaries of the school district, including churches, Bible clubs, alumni groups, Boyer Town Area Historical Society, Boyer Town Multi-Service, Building a Better Boyer Town, Homeowners Associations, Boyer Town Museum of Historic Vehicles, dance studios within the boundaries. That district rate for custodial and other personnel services as may be necessary for their use of the facility. There shall be no charge for custodial services in the event, if the event is scheduled during a normal custodial hours. However, we do have something else listed further in the rules that states that, you know, if a custodian is being pulled for a, more of a fraction of their time and it's impacting their work, then there would be a fee and we would be able to administer that fee. In addition, a facility use fee will be charged. The fees vary depending on whether or not it is an admission fee for the public attending the organization's event, and we refer to the fee schedule. And then the last organization is just other organizations, and these are groups that are not defined by any of the above categories. These are groups that have been coming in and using our facilities because we have such great rates. So that, that was where the change within the rules for use of the school facilities occurred. The insurance coverage is the same. Custodial service, we did put in, again, an area where it says an affiliated group or organization may be responsible for the cost of a custodian, even if a custodian was previously assigned to work. And this will be subject to the needs of the group for setup and breakdown of the event. And that the school district has the sole right to determine the number of custodians needed for any activity. The technical support personnel, that remains the same, sports fields, security. Upon application for facility use by any organization, the necessity to obtain adequate security and/or traffic control, if it's a larger event, would be added to the fee. Labor charges for that security or traffic control would be based upon the district's security contract. Equipment charges are the same, rental schedule would be the same, billing would be the same. Just to point out that in the event, an activity is canceled or postponed by the sponsoring organization, that the school district occurs expenses on behalf of the activity, the sponsoring organization shall be incurred expenses. And then the list of rules with respects to being able to utilize the facility are listed and are always shared when groups are looking to utilize our facilities. And then lastly, the next administrative regulation that would go along with policy seven oh seven would be the facility use fee schedule. And quite honestly, I know that the questions that would be coming from all of you are, well, how did you come up with the fees? Many of the fees are what we are currently or have been currently charging, but other fees are, are new, specifically under school-related youth groups. We're just trying to be accountable for the fact that every time we open up our doors, turn on the lights in a classroom that's being used by an outside organization, each time we have to adjust heat or air conditioning after hours. It, it does end up costing the school district. And I did come across a policy with administrative regulations from a school district within Berks County who had just recently done the same adjustment to their fee schedule. And I, and I felt that it was a relatively fair fee to start with. And, and again, this is draft, I'm coming forward. I came forward with a different draft rate that did not receive a lot of support. So I went back to doing more research with local school districts, and this is what I have come up with. So obviously, our school affiliated groups, which again are our groups such as our parent, teacher groups, our sports boosters, our music league, those would be the groups that would fall under there, as well as obviously any student club, any activity that is driven specifically through the school as part of the, the school. There is however, one charge under our school affiliated group organizations for the lighting. If you are using something that's going to cost monies and we wouldn't have the lighting on at the Memorial Stadium, there was a, a fee added there. And also for fields for tournaments and camps, which is completely different than ju, those are generated revenue. So we believe that there should be a fee there along with tournaments and camps and gyms as well under that school affiliated fee. The same $35 an hour was being pushed across for anybody that was using the lighting at Memorial Stadium. And really, the, the one change is that, you know, anyone that's looking to use building space would be caught, would be charged $5 an hour, whether it's the auditorium, the cafeteria, the kitchen, the classroom, the gymnasium, and elementary multipurpose room or a large group instructional room. And that is for our school-related youth groups who again, you are Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, BAWA, Optimists, Boyer Town Legionettes, Twirlers, Midget, Baseball, Boyer Town, et cetera. It's not an all-inclusive, if somebody else fell within that, that we didn't capture because they weren't on a facility use form for the past few years, then we would, you know, certainly be capturing them as well. And then so on. Go ahead.
Okay, is the $35 per hour for the lighting going to cover it?
My understanding is yes, it, it would cover it, yes.
Okay, that, that's my one concern. I want to make sure that's covered. Another question, you have the parking lots on here. If you're renting the building, wouldn't the parking lot go with it?
No, the parking lot is a separate rental. People just rent the parking lot for events. So if you're using our building, we're not charging you for that parking lot. It's, if you're only using our parking lot for some event, then, you know, we want to make sure that if we have to send somebody out there to be picking up trash or something happens, you know, that you can't account for, so, yeah.
I just saw that on.
Yeah, nope, they can park there for free if they're having our event.
Thank you. So just a question, I, I see that the, the fees are pretty low for, what are we calling them, school-related youth groups? However, I worry about a club like Optimist that uses our fields and facilities for many, many, many hours, that those could really end up impacting the services they provide the, the youth of our community. Is it possible, I would be interested in exploring maybe capping it so that, or have we had any conversations with the Optimist about how that would impact them?
I did have conversation with the Optimist, and they said, just let us know what it is that you would be asking for. So they didn't feel that $5 was a game changer. They're, they are utilizing four of six of the gyms at the elementary level, and I believe they are using middle school level and high school. And please don't quote me exactly, but I know that they are in quite a few of our buildings. As far as fields, there is no charge for fields because the baseball is taking care of the fields and they're maintaining them. And they're not looking for lights. They are, you know, they're not coming inside for, for anything. There's really no cost. They're taking care of their infield. They're managing the grass cutting, so they're really pretty self-sufficient within that area. It, it's more about, you know, just the amount of traffic that's in and out of our buildings each night. And they start pretty early in the season and go pretty long and, yeah.
Yeah, so the Optimist, just to kind of, they did not feel that these fees would negatively impact their services?
The conversation that I had with the person who is in charge right now was not concerned, no.
Okay.
They were more interested in making a decision. And any of these fees that I'm, that we are discussing, we would be making sure that people understood that they would not go into effect until July 1 to, to give everyone fair and ample notice.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Just so you know, we couldn't pull anything up on our computers, except the one page. I had my hand up a couple of times, but to let you know, I don't know why. Right, if everybody else had the same problem or not, because it's difficult to go back and try to now remember what you said about the fees and all. But I did write a couple of things down. We had discussed this thing many, many meetings, and we used to have an application fee in there. That disappeared, I see.
The recommendation was for an application fee. I didn't feel that the feedback that I've gotten from the consensus of the board prior was in support of it, but if that's the direction that the majority of the board wants to see added, then I'm, I'm, this is a draft and I'm having conversation with the nine of you.
I mean, we spent a lot of time going through the applications, checking on the insurance, checking on the group, scheduling this and that. And I thought we had kind of agreed to that. I guess I was wrong. The other thing is, a lot of the classifications were changed now from before.
I did, I did change the classifications. I felt that they were more inclusive the way that they were worded, primarily because there was pitting profit, nonprofit against profit or for-profit. And people that were nonprofit were paying even though some were not. And I believe that the way that we captured, or the way that I'm capturing, because I can only tell you that I'm very responsible for this, is that it, it captures the groups a lot differently, and you, you know where you fall.
And then I know we had, over the years, the last meeting I remember being brought up was up in Earl a few years back about some of the groups that, that are renting our facility. Well, they were getting them, supposed to be renting, but they were really getting them for free. But we had made a, and I don't know if it was what you would call it, but that if the groups were our students, that was okay. But if they were outside students, they'd be under a different classification.
Correct, that's correct. And that, and I do have that identified here through, through the, the way that I'm defining the...
Well, not with the classifications you have, some of them.
I'm not using the word classification. What I'm using is user groups. And then I have each user group broken down and defined.
Okay, I can't find it now, but...
All right, yeah.
And you said the electric was sufficient, even with, you know, the electric rates just really went up. I don't know when you checked or whatever, but they, they've increased dramatically.
And again, we would have to really look and see what the exact cost of the outside lighting, Mrs. Nicole, $35 an hour. Yeah, I, I believe so.
And the other thing is, if, if you're renting this and let's say it's $5 an hour for the auditorium, and I'm a school-related youth group, do I add on to that then another $20 an hour for the air?
So the air, the, the add-ons were something that was on the current, the way our, our, our policy is sitting right now, these add-ons are there, and they are only added on specifically to when the air or stage crew would be needed, which is typically on weekends. These were for larger events that this part of the add-on was incorporated. That is the information that I've received from our admin assistant, who is working every single day with school dude and facility use. So it's not a typical add-on to when we have the air conditioning on or when we have the heat on. But obviously, if they needed a stage crew or a stage director or some IT or security, those would be added on if it was, you know, during the, the regular week.
Okay, and how, how do we determine the security?
Typically, when a organization submits that they would like to rent our facility, the question is, how many people are you expecting? If they give a number, you know, 250 per se, that is pushed back out to our security, to our, to our school police officers. And they know the area and the number of people, and they say that requires two security officers to make sure that this place, these areas are, are, you know, cut off or maintained.
But if I just want to rent a classroom for some type of, of meeting and I'm having like 30 or 40 people there?
Then there has not typically been the need or requirement of having security.
Well, how do we, how do we keep the group from going to another part of the building?
Good question, Mrs. Deroff, because right now, I mean, for, you know, for however long our facilities have been, being used, it would be, again, the person who's in the building is typically the custodian, and obviously, they're busy doing their work and not, you know, addressing that group. And at the high school, we have ways of being able to close and lock doors, that people can't venture from the athletics area up into the classroom space. At the elementary schools, I know that they do have some gates that are on wheels, but, you know, they need to, to make sure that they're affixed to something and that they can't be moved. So, you know, I think it's been a lot of trust, Mrs. Deroff, over the history of, of Boyer Town Area School District being used by outside groups.
Since we're making a new policy, are we just going to go on trust then? Is that what you're saying?
If the board recommends me putting something else in there, I'm, I'm happy to do as I am directed.
Okay, then I didn't see anything in here about summer camps and before and after-school rentals and none of that.
We did not combine our contracts for, before, after-school with, with, with organizations that are using our facilities through a contract. This is something different. This is just random times of using our facility. Those would have to be looked at, and we would have to make a decision on what the square footage cost should be increased to and how we're going to address those contracts that would, you know, incorporate the before and after-school. With respects to camps, we did identify within the facility use fee schedule, which you cannot see, Mrs. Deroff, but I'm happy to share with you if you would like it, because I have another one here. We have identified that there would be a cost for our own groups at $100 a day. And I believe... And I believe, um, that is what we have been charging with respects to camps. Because again, I've been working directly with, um, the, Ms. Nicola's administrative assistant, who, um, handles all of our facility use. So we did identify camps with, um, in the fee structure. And as Ms. Nyman pointed out, we also captured, um, parking lot use.
And if the bill's not paid, what's the penalty for that? Or how, how long are you giving them to pay the bill? But there's bills that still haven't been paid for years.
That's a good question, and I would have to throw that back to our business office, because-
So within our new accounting system that we transitioned to a number of years ago, it has much better tracking of accounts receivable. Um, those notices are sent out routinely, um, and we reach out to those people who have not paid. As for things that were passed in the older system, um, I don't know that we have captured all of those, um, because we were not aware of them.
But what length of time, if I rent the facility, when do I have to pay my bill?
Usually thirty days. Um, but to my knowledge, we have not yet sent anybody to collections.
Okay, because I didn't see anything on the- I didn't see anything on the, uh, the new rules about how long it would, you would have. So you're saying thirty days. So what's the penalty if you don't pay in thirty days?
We certainly wouldn't be able to use the facility again, that's for sure.
Well, we have, we had that before. People didn't pay and they aren't using the facility anymore. That's why I'm asking. I, I was here then. There's organizations that did that. So I think if we're changing and, and doing a new policy, all that stuff has to be addressed.
Again, these are administrative regulations. And so administrative regulations can be tweaked along the way. Typically, an administrative regulation, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Sultanic, uh, is really our regulation of how we would like to manage things. So as we see that there are problems, we can go ahead and, and do these without bringing them, you know, forward to the board to change. We certainly are not doing that in this case, because we want to, you know, share with you that we're changing the fee structure. We're adding fees, um, where fees have not been charged and that we've reorganized the group names. And, uh, but we, we certainly could address things as we see them and make you aware of, of the problems. That, that's the, what we really want to set is the foundation, because this has been very consuming. Um, and it's a very consuming part of Ms. Nicola's and admin assistant's, um, job. So I think the flexibility of being able to impose some more strict rules would, um, you know, would be certainly our latitude.
I, I understand that, but if we're doing it, why not do it right the first time? Or try to get it as, as close as we can, instead of doing add-ons here and add-ons there? And then I have one last, uh, question. Like if I rented Memorial Stadium and I had no admission, it's only fifty dollars more for admission, and I could possibly make a couple of thousand dollars. Is that, am I looking at this properly?
And that, that was, and that, let's talk about that. Because it is, is there a, um, a consensus of the board that believes that we should charge more? Though, those were, we, we never did that before and we didn't decipher. So we were taking a stab at, you know, should there be a difference in the use of rental use of our facility? So if, if you are a group and you're not charging admission and you're just using the facility for, I don't know, whatever event, um, and there's no admission, you know, okay, there's a flat rate. But if you are looking to, to be making money, you know, do we charge more? I, that, I'm, I'm looking for feedback from the board on that one. Or do I just keep it at one amount?
And then, uh, I didn't see anything on there for the concession stands. And then I didn't see anything on there. We have food trucks that come in, do they, are they gonna have to pay? Uh, like they charge, they, they pay at other facilities? They have their food truck there and pay a percentage, or are we gonna charge them? I didn't see anything.
I did not incorporate the food truck that's in there. I know that there has been, um, we, we can't make french fries. It's a way to get french fries to be able to be offered at football games. I, I know that, you know, there's- We, that's, again, we can talk about that if we want to. As far as the concession stand, um, nobody is really asking to use our concession stands outside of our school-affiliated groups and organizations. And, um, I just didn't incorporate the concession stands. But, you know, again, could, could add, could add the, the concession stand and could look at, I think that if we're going to do something with the french fry, um, truck, which is the only food truck that I am aware of, then that would fall under a separate contract, because it's, um-
Well, once again, that's the only one we have now. But if we're redoing the policy-
Right. Then I would say that I think establishing a contract per somebody that wants to put a food truck up would be, um, you know, the way to go, to be honest with you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can't be coupled. One is, I, I, I do think you have to, on the fee structure itself, I think you have to more clearly say there's an exemption on the HVAC, that if you're coming in just to use the cafeteria, that you're not gonna have a twenty-dollar adder on. Because when I first look at that, I see that you're, you're paying no, especially if you take the PTOs. PTO comes in and they're not, there's no fee, but I'm looking at a twenty-dollar HVAC charge. So that has to be a little clearer as to, I, I know the intent is not to charge them. I'm not, not arguing that. Just I think we have to be a little clearer on that. Uh, another thing is, I, I think there should be a yearly review on this due to all the variables involved in this policy, with all the, the different groups, the different fees, the different things that come up. I think it should be a yearly review on this, uh, just to maybe get history. And that would bring me to the other portion of, do we have any history of anybody using the field without admission versus people using the field with admission? Do we have any background history on that to use for anything on justifying the, the two-fifty versus three-hundred? I, I don't know of any.
And I can't tell you that anyone is really looking to rent Memorial Stadium, and Bear Stadium is not, um, for, for rent under the current contract that, or agreement that has been established. So it, it's kind of there as, as to see what happens, if there would be any requests for use and grow from that point.
I, I think we need to have further discussion on that. Uh, and I'm not sure what that discussion looks like. Be perfectly honest with you, because I don't have enough information to move forward on that. So it asks to have more discussion in that area on using the field. Even when somebody uses it with admission, with, without admission, we're still tearing the field up. Uh, and I'm not sure exactly how that, how we should address that. I mean, I don't know. That's why I'm saying we need more-
Well, we would also have the discretion to be able to say who's coming in to utilize it and what they would be doing and, and to be able to say no.
Yeah, that's, but I mean, there's nothing that says that in there. Nothing that gives me the, the good feeling that we're protecting, that we're protecting the, uh, the investments of the school.
Well, and that's because of the, um, software program that is used, which is not friendly to be able to, um, show you. School Dude has a lot of different, um, pieces to it, that if you answer no or yes to something, it, it'll immediately divert you somewhere else. And so the administrator, just not a person, but the person who's overseeing School Dude, really has to go through it. And, and it goes through multiple levels of people. So it starts at the building level to say, number one, is this room, you know, uh, area open? And so goes through to there, and then it comes up to the next level. So there are a lot of different things in place that do, do that.
So I'm not gonna be against moving now, but I would like the answers for that before we move it beyond any first readings or anything on this, or any changes that we've done with the ARs.
With respects to, um-
The, just the memorial fields that charge.
Right, and, and I, I think maybe what we need to do, Mr. Brophy, I would really be recommending to the board is that let's see how, uh, a half a year of request of use of that field, what, what happens? What comes out of it? Let me give you data of how many times Memorial Field's been used, and then make an adjustment as we would need to go. If we feel like, you know, this is now becoming a big thing and, you know, we're seeing, um, negative impacts of letting that field be used, then we would definitely need to make an adjustment for that.
Put that on the schedule then, if we can do that, go forward with that. Finally, I'm gonna go back to security for a second.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I- Trust and hope are not two of my best words. As you know from my background, uh, I, I think we need something more in the security portion, because at this point right now, and we're in this position even right now, I don't know how we guarantee the security and safety of our building each and every day when we have it open at night. I just think that's something we need to address. And, you know, we just had another shooting in Michigan. Uh, there's, there's other things going around now. We've been distracted by masks, by remote learning, by, uh, discussions on books. And I think security's dropped down a little bit. Not on just us, but I think it's dropped down everywhere. And I think that's something we gotta relook at again, to make sure we absolutely can say our buildings are one-hundred percent safe twenty-four hours a day. And, and I just think we need, we need to, we need to do, I don't know what the answer is where we go. We get the security company in, what do we have to do? But when somebody, let's say somebody rents the auditorium, uh, what keeps them from going from the auditorium to the rest of the building? Now, I know in some cases locked doors will work. So we have, we just lock the doors and they can't go. But that's not the case in every one of the places we would rent. And I really do believe we need to address that much deeper than we have. Thank you.
I know some of the buildings did have gates there. Um, I think we need to investigate what we do have in gates for the security. I know there used to be some at the high school. There were some at elementaries, but, you know, if, if it comes down to it, we might just need to invest in some that we can move from school to school or whatever and, um, have them available, because security is important.
We certainly wouldn't be able to move them from school to school, but we can certainly look and see what we have in the schools and where they can be best positioned, and how can we make sure that they're locking?
Yeah, that, that's what I'd recommend, you get the security, or we have a security consultant. There are things out on the market that they may be able to, uh, recommend that are mobile. And we don't have to buy a whole lot of them, because we can move them from place to place where we need them. Some things, you know, some things we have can be static and be installed, but there are other things we might be able to do that are mobile.
And this isn't, I guess, directly related to the policy discussion, but it is related in a way. I think I've mentioned this maybe a few times, maybe not so direct. But this is a process I went through when I was on the, on the YMCA board. Is, everyone always wondered, how's the, how's the YMCA exist but still run at a loss? Well, what they did is they, we needed to figure out an actual value of our facilities. There is a cost involved. And then we would make the determination, okay, what would we, in a sense, subsidize that price for the facility use? Now listen, we're not here to charge this community any more than we already do. But I think we, we need to equate a value of what that space is actually costing us. Whether it's a gymnasium, whether it's a field, whether it's a security, whether, it all has a value. And I think we're obligated to equate that, so that we know how much the district is actually putting out, um, per year. So then we can actually determine, okay, this is what the gym costs. This is what our expenses were, above and beyond what our day was. But we're not gonna charge, we'll go, at least we were talking about the Optimist Club. They are a partnership that we have. I think we should have a partnership with all of our organizations. And, and I'm gonna pick on them. They're, they're, they're the one organization that understands that they need to share in this added cost. We can't just continuously charge all the taxpayers, if you will. But I don't know that any of them would mind, as long as they know what those costs are. So I, I would like to see us go through the process of equating real values comparables to what I'm gonna say for the gym. What does it cost to, to rent a gym facility at a private facility? Uh, just because we're using other school districts, maybe they should do the same. So at least we have a quantitative value of what we are subsidizing to some of these programs, and then make the decision from there, what do we feel is a community group, what is an outside group? You know, we don't want for-profit organizations taking advantage of us. We wanna do, we wanna have a partnership, uh, uh, between a balance of shared expenses. So just a thought there, it'd be nice to have a, you know, actual true value of what that space is worth and how much we are willing to allow other groups to use it. So at least we know each year, okay, here's what our expenses were, but here's what we actually brought in. So in a sense, we're taking a loss on paper. Just an idea.
All right, so what I will be doing, um, at our next board meeting is I will follow up with a few of you, um, Mr. Brophy and Mrs. Deroff, just to make sure that I captured any questions that you had as it pertained to some things, just to make sure that I have them there. But I will be bringing this forward for, um, uh, first reading at the next meeting. I will make sure that Mrs. Kramer has printed out copies for you at your spots, so that you have, um, them right in front of you. Okay, yeah, no, that's all right. It's easier to, to do it that way, because I've been writing all over mine.
Maybe just to review quick, because I was trying to take notes. So we're looking, I think, for the application fee for twenty-five dollars. That was discussed before. To raise the Memorial Stadium to three-hundred for the other, you know, the last group. Charge some kind of fee for outside vendors, food, i.e. food trucks. Um, account receivables should have some kind of, uh, usually, if you're not paid on time, you charge one and a half percent, you know, a month. And then reviews, I think we need to get our security company to give us an idea what this is, you know. And that could be done with, possibly with emails and stuff like that, but they're the experts, so. And if I miss something, please, somebody bring it up.
I'll go back. I think that one's done.
So we're at the public, public comment period number one, Donna Savage. Is Donna here? All right.
Hi, Donna Savage. Um, just wanted to comment on the folks out in the lobby. There's about forty people out there, and I talked to a few who said they wanted to sign up for public comment, but they work and they weren't able to review the agenda and sign up in time, and they missed the deadline to sign up. So I just wanted to comment on that policy that you have at this time. That's all, thank you.
At this time, we'll be looking for approval minutes for January twenty-fourth?
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hebingway.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, under the superintendent's consent agenda, I am looking for the school board of directors to, um, approve a confidential settlement that has been finalized for student two-two-zero-four-eight-six in the Boyertown Area School District. So I am looking for an approval of this settlement agreement.
Nyman moves.
I'll keep on, Melch.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hebingway.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I, I have a question about procedure, but, uh, can I ask here, or do you want me to wait? So I have, my question is- So I have, my question is, and I'm not even sure if this can be done, so I guess it's a question for Mr. Saltanic. But is it possible for the board to allow people who did not get to sign up to speak? Like, if we had a board majority or a two-third, like, I don't know, is it possible?
Generally, we don't have a process to do that. And how are we going to determine who in this room wanted to speak and didn't get that opportunity? And my guess is that by the time we've worked through that entire issue, we might be through the rest of the agenda.
So it's not possible to just put out a sign-up sheet like we used to do and allow people to sign up while we work through the agenda?
Now, are you gonna be willing to do that at every, will you be willing to do that at every meeting? And is that the way that you want to follow your policy?
I would absolutely be willing to do that at every meeting. I think the policy needs to be revised.
But currently, the policy doesn't provide for this.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
All right, I am looking for the board of school directors to approve the 2324 Boyer Town Area School District calendar as presented. The calendar does have modifications. The start date is still the same, which is set for August 21st. However, this calendar does present with two less half-days than our current calendar does. So we have gone from 15 half-days to 13 and have made adjustments in order to address professional development else, without doing half-days. So just to review, the first six half-days for the beginning of the year, one is a professional development day, which would be September 20th. There is another early dismissal day, which is October 11th, which is for our senior portfolio presentations, which does incorporate the entire school district teaching staff who sit and in on these portfolio presentations. November, we have parent-teacher conferences, which are set up at the elementary level, where conferences are held in the afternoons and evenings on the 20th and 21st. The 22nd is an opportunity for staff to be released for their commitment to the parent-teacher conferences that evening, for those evenings, as well as the 23rd. Those are early dismissals to support the teachers in the collective bargaining agreement. We have a professional development day in January, which is a half-day. And then the next half-day would be March. April, there is one, and the end of the school year, as we typically have in order for final exams and for teacher meetings with, as we're moving student groups up to the next grade level for transition purposes. So the calendar that's being presented actually has two less half-days than the calendar in which we are operating. And it would have, fast math, I believe, seven days less than what the initial proposed was.
I don't believe this was here on the last, the last revision, the last draft that we received. You also now have November 3rd as a day that the student body is off for teacher professional days. And now you also have, what was the other day, May 3rd. Okay, so what happens to your snow days now is we're down to one snow day. And then we can go to flex, I understand that. But that still means the kids are out of school, which we're, you know, trying to avoid not having them in school. So when, okay, just to kind of add all of these up. So 58 hours is put aside for next year for teacher instruction. Do we have any information as a board that we can see what is being demanded of Boyer Town that other schools are not taking all this time for teacher from the Department of Education?
I personally have not done a synopsis of all of the other school districts with respect to the professional development that they're providing. So I can't tell you if we have more or less. I can address the two days in question. We had a professional development day this year on November 3rd. So we carried that over. And typically, on the 5th of May, it was a half-day. We moved that to a full professional development day. The 5th of May is, or I'm sorry, the 3rd of May in 2024, that is typically prom day. And I know that students have been, you know, released early or releasing early, so we decided to use that. There are 181 student days. We are only required to have 180 student days. And between the amount of hours that we run our, operate school and the days we are meeting the requirements that the Department of Education places on us. So students wouldn't be losing time. And if we would unfortunately have a Pennsylvania winter, which kind of feel like we're moving to be like California here, we would then have to look back at making up time, you know, otherwise.
Did we have three snow days this year? Were three were built in?
We did, which was, which was making students come to school 183 days. So we, when we really only need them to be in attendance, 180, so.
But we don't have any snow days built in now. So that means if they do get a real snow day, they're gonna end up having to be in school at home.
We do have one school snow day, correct. And you are correct, we would be moving, because the state has moved to flexible instructional days, that would be where students would be off during school. They're not sitting in front of a computer. That is not a requirement for the entire day. There would be some responsibility to their work, their schoolwork, but it would not be for, you know, the full entire day. So, yes. And ultimately, we would lose those days completely.
Don't we usually have a motion and a second before we have discussion? Or am I wrong? This is getting up-hand.
A lot of moves.
Hogan seconds.
I have a short statement. Basically, I'm voting no to this current calendar that is being brought forward. Though I appreciate that what the board did, or the administration did, did not take into consideration the responses from our schools' families. I should have made sure, I should have reviewed the survey. And to that, I'm sorry. It was not, it was not life, just a couple, a couple of families. It was a response of 38% of the district, of which 69% voted in favor of starting later. It's a shame that we, as a board, are not listening to our area families.
I too, I'm gonna be voting no for this because of the fact there's still 13 half-days. And nobody is taking into consideration what the parents asked for. We put out the survey, we gave the administration the order to do a survey. I did ask for, to see what the survey said. I did not still get a copy of that, so I'm unsure of what exactly went out. But we had parents who responded. I don't care if it was 100 parents, 1,000 parents, whatever. We put out the survey, we asked, we got a response back. And the response was to start it a week later. And that's what I'm gonna go by. Thank you.
Thank you. So, one, I want to thank administration for all the work. I know it has been a lot of work on this calendar this year. Two, I, I don't like the 21st start date. As a parent, I, you know, it stinks to send your kid back that early. But I think that when we are talking about, you know, the fact of why we're starting the 21st is making sure that our BCTC kids are getting to school and that they're getting there. I know they have, I'm gonna call it, is it the NOCT? They have a big test they have to take, yeah. So they need that time. I'm going to vote yes for this because I think, one, we need to get it done. We need, we need to get the calendar approved, and we need to move forward. Excuse me, I apologize. Two, I think, next year, I really think we need to look at taking in community input and pushing that start date back further to where it used to be. As for the half-days, I appreciate all the hard work that went into that. I think professional development is really important. I know with new science standards, there's gonna be some development for our teachers around that. And that's all. I appreciate the hard work. Thank you.
Okay, there's been a lot of discussion on this. And more from the start date, end date, to let's talk about half-days. This is about the start date. The administration presented a lot of reasons to start on the 21st. They did. They presented academic reasons. They presented financial reasons, logistical reasons, and legal reasons. All those are presented, presented quite well. I have seen none of those reasons for the 28th, except the fact that it's interfering with vacation time. I'm sorry, we're an educational institute. That's what we're here for. So I'm gonna vote yes in support of our BCTC kids. That's what we're supposed to be voting for. That's what I'm voting for. By going back on the 21st, we helped them academically. We helped them with their, with their tests at the end. And there's no detriment to anybody else. I, when's the last time we went back to school after Labor Day? I actually asked that question to somebody the other day, a friend of my daughter's. She's 37 years old. She doesn't remember. So this, this is, this is an issue out of, I don't know where. We've been going back to school in August for a while. And I don't even understand why this has been such a big discussion point and why it's been holding up this calendar for three, you know, three straight meetings. So I will be voting yes in support of what the administration has presented.
I'm gonna be voting yes also. Not that I am in love with the date of starting, but after Dr. Foley explained about the certifications et cetera that the kids get to take at the VOTEC, I think we'd be letting them down if we started later. And we have to look at all the kids, not just the ones that are here that are not at the IU, at the BCTC. And I think we really need to do it. Plus, I believe this year, we have the exact same schedule, only off by one day. And nobody said a word. So I don't know what happened. But I'm gonna be voting yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
No.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes, and I'm voting because of my kids that go to the BCTC. I don't want a missing four days of education because of vacation. So I'm voting yes.
Mr. Zawada.
No.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
I'm gonna vote no. And I'm voting no because we sent out and asked for the public's opinion. We got over, what, 1,300-plus people, over 1,000 said they'd rather the 28th date. And it's my understanding that it only affects 200 to 300 kids, and they would all still be bused, and it's for three days. And all the people that don't have, to be bused from home, you'd have to get people to drive to the school and then be bused in. That's three days to inconvenience 7,000 people for 200 seems insane. So I'll be voting no.
Five yes, four no. Motion carries.
Next, I will be looking for the school board of directors to approve the overnight trip as listed. The purpose of this trip is for seven Bach Choir students to travel to Mountain View Middle School, Mechanicsburg, PA, on February 24th and 25th. And students will participate in the Region 5 Choral Festival.
Hogan seconds. Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we are looking for the school, the board of school directors to approve the Plan Con Part K as presented. The approval of Plan Con Part K is a requirement from the Department of Education.
Daryl, please.
Hogan seconds. Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we will be looking for approval for the Berks County Intermediate Unit. Board of School Directors has approved the entities 2023-2024 mandated school district services budget in the sum of $1,963,737. Boyer Town Area School District's projected cost for next school year is $101,318.87. This amount represents a 2.37% increase over the 22-23 contribution. Legislative Act 102 of 1970 mandates the BCIU services to Berks County School Districts these programs. And services considered as mandated are management services, school services, curriculum development, and instructional improvement, continuing professional education services, pupil personnel services, and educational technical services. The administration recommends that the board of school directors approve the BCIU 2023-2024 budget as presented.
Hogan moves.
Daryl, second.
I just have a comment. I just wanted to take this opportunity just to say, I think as we move forward, it's always important when we're talking about advocating, to continue to advocate on mandated services and mandates from, from Harrisburg that get handed down to us and impact our budget. So that's, that's all I have to say.
And next, the administration recommends the board of school directors approve the following pers, oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Personnel. Administration recommends the board of school directors approve the following personnel actions, including resignations, employment, appointments, changes status, leave of absences, and supplemental contracts as per the attached.
Nyman moves.
Brophy, second.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes, regrettably.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Deroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Panarelle, that completes the superintendent's report.
All right, public comment period number two, Donnie Savage. Donnie Savage? Okay, Jill Oakes.
Okay. Jill Oaks.
Jill Oaks, Gilbertsville. I am here to speak regarding, about the football team and Coach Conick. Some people have made it clear you will not answer any questions and will instead do as you please and hide behind the "we can't comment about personnel issues." We moved to Boyertown School District almost seven years ago. We did so after much research about the school and the area. We have found the schools to be better than average and much better than the Philadelphia Public School System. We first got involved in the Optus Athletics, and they were great. However, once our boys started playing sports at the middle and high school, we have been disappointed. It seems as though the athletics are an afterthought, especially with the football programs. It seems as though the football program is an inconvenience. To make matters worse is we found Coach Conick, the boys love. He gave the kids a drive, a desire. He instilled a win attitude. He demanded teamwork and told our boys they are winners. Coach Conick brought back team dinners to build a team cohesiveness. Coach Conick put in a game plan that was built around our team, not tried to build a team around an offense. Our, our boys bought into it and were more successful than they have been in five years. So what does Coach Conick get for building a team from four years of being beat up in the pack to a team that is a formidable opponent? He gets asked to resign or else. Why? I don't expect a response, but I have my own and shared conclusions. It's not a personnel matter. It's a personal problem. The kids love him, the parents love him, and the team loves him. But it sounds like there are one or two administrators that don't love him. Well, when do we put our kids and our student athletes before adult personal confictions? I wanna, I want you all to put yourself in our football players' cleats. Some of these boys were cheated out of entire season due to COVID. Some of these boys have wondered if they were going to get to play ball the season after COVID. Some of these boys didn't know if, who they were going to have a coach last year and not finding out until last March that they finally had a coach. All these boys had endured some hardships last year, where they all were threatened with forfeiting the rest of the season. Do any of you realize the heartache, the anxiety, the doubts, the negative impact, or the emotional tolls that the constant wondering and inconsistencies these kids have faced? Look, education is first and the priority. Coach Conick demanded that too. However, there is tremendous benefit to high school extracurricular activities, including sports. Furthermore, do you not see the benefit of kids that play sports and possibly go on to play at the next level for not only the school, but for the community and our young local athletes? Again, I understand you will not discuss personnel issues. However, unless Coach Conick has done something so outrageous, was so derelict in his duties, or committed some crime, there is no reason not to keep him as the head football coach or other than a personal issue with someone or someones. I'm going to demand today that it better be for a good reason and not some petty infighting and hurt feelings. With that being said, I'm asking the School Board to do everything in their power to keep Coach Conick the head football coach of the Boyertown Football Program. Thank you.
Amy Foskey? Foskey.
I am here to speak about the same thing that Mrs. Oaks was talking about. I am here as a parent of a Bash football player, significant other of Coach Conick, and active member of the Boyertown Area School District community. I would like to begin by saying thank you to Mr. Palladino. Thank you for bringing in an amazing and dedicated coach and giving Coach Conick the opportunity to work with a great group of boys and parents. He helped grow the program, has community and students excited for Friday Night Lights and having us all look forward to the future of Bash football. As of yesterday, he was told he would resign or he would, his contract would be ended effective tomorrow morning. Thank you, Mr. Palladino, for single-handedly ruining that and trying to tear this team and program apart. In your own words, quote, "It's not personal?" I beg to differ. I have said since October thirteenth that you had one goal. I've talked to Dustin about it. On October thirteenth, a meeting was called by Mrs. Torscha, and since that day, things have changed. Since, since that day, Miss Tors, or, since that day, Mr. Palladino has made it his mission to get rid of Coach Conick. Ironically, the meeting on October thirteenth was mostly directed at Mr. Palladino and his lack of integrity, professionalism, and capability to do his job. I never jumped on that bandwagon. While I do not agree with all of the attacks on him, from that day on, he made it impossible for Coach Conick to effectively do his job. In fact, he refused to speak to Coach Conick for weeks following that meeting. Professional? I think not. Every step of Coach Conick and the football program was micromanaged and put under a microscope. Having been involved in other sports with my other kids, this is not the usual practice. The athletics director is there to support the coach. The coach runs the team, but other coaches and parents have been greatly involved in fundraising and communications. Mr. Palladino wants all of this to be Coach Conick's responsibility. It became so intense that all communication between, between Coach Conick and the athletics director had to go through Dr. Foley, the principal. That is not his job and is an added burden on him. Since Mr. Palladino's personal vendetta against Coach Conick has made him incapable of being an effective athletics director. As far as Coach Conick's first season as football coach, have you seen any positive from how the program and season went? I have. I've heard and witnessed many of them. Mr. Palladino has only pulled out his perceived negatives, no positive. As a matter of fact, his yearly review was a disgrace and self-serving. Mr. Palladino has stated that many people in the community don't like Coach Conick. By the outpouring of support and uproar of the community, as well as the show of people here tonight, I find that hard to believe. Many people clearly did not approve of Mr. Palladino, yet he remains. Many items he has against Coach Conick have proven to be lies. Accusations are presented with no basis. Most items he has presented are hearsay. And even today, he told a student that he was misinformed about Coach Conick being forced to resign or let go as of tomorrow. It is sickening. You have no idea how much time, effort, and effort Coach Conick has put into this program, and it is not for the money, obviously. It is for the love of this school, this town, this program, and these kids. We would do, and he would do anything for these kids. He would do anything for their parents. He only wants to make them better players and also better students and people. He has done nothing wrong. Please, don't allow Mr. Palladino's personal agenda to rip this program to shreds. Coach Conick would never quit on his kids. His kids would never quit on him, and he will not quit on you.
Board comment.
Uh, first of all, I appreciate everybody that came out tonight. We are listening. Gotta figure out how we can do it, but I personally am listening, and I appreciate the passion. And for all you people that showed up tonight, it means a lot, and it shows the love that you have for your coach. So, and that's hard to find in today's day and age. As far as the calendar and stuff like that, appreciate all the work that went into it. Also, you know, I agree the, the students that start early, I think the misunderstanding is that there is transportation being um, given to those students so they would not miss those three days. Other than that, I wish everybody a nice night.
I'll just be quick. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. And just also wanted to congratulate TSA students. They had a pretty substantial, what was it, Saturday, Miss Torscha, that they went? So I'm proud of all of you. My daughter, one of them. Uh, so just congratulations to that program.
Just wanna thank you guys for coming out tonight. I can see that this coach is loved, especially when you get all these young people here. That, that says a lot. So thank you. Happy Valentine's Day.
New comment.
Um, so happy Valentine's Day. Um, was there any count taken of how many people, do we take account of how many people attend? Do we, like, in the audience? No? Okay. I was just, yeah, just 'cause I can't see everyone who's here. I just was wondering about that. Um, it's, um, it's great to see so many young people here, um, being, being a part of the process. So I think it's really important to make sure that your voices are heard since these decisions, um, impact you. So thank you for coming. Um, I do think that, that I've heard some things that are very concerning. Um, and I also just wanted, on a different note, I wanted to comment on, I recently went to a choir performance at Gilbertsville. Um, and I just wanted to, we often hear so much about the high school and things that are happening there, but we have some really great things happening in our elementary schools. Um, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize, you know, all of those students who are also participating in the things that our district offers. Um, thank you.
Okay, first of all, um, I know I did talk with Mrs. Torscha, and I believe she must have forgotten, um, one of her fellow past security officers passed away. I can't remember the date anymore, but Mr. Greg Miller, who was a Boyertown cop, retired from there and became our security cop here, and then left us and went to Daniel Boone, I think it was. And, um, unfortunately, um, the other week he passed away. Doing exactly what he liked. He was, um, at a ski place in New Hampshire. Not that he was skiing, but, um, unfortunately, but, uh, he was doing what he liked with his friends. So, um, sorry to see him gone. Second of all, I see and hear all of yous. I think there's probably about fifty in here in the room, and if Mrs. U. Savage was right, there's about forty out there in the hall. So you're looking at over seventy-five people. Seventy-five students, parents, who we should be listening to and should have been allowed to sign up tonight to, to speak regardless of the requirement. And I am very hurt by this. This is the reason I'm here, is these students and these parents that back us. And anybody who doesn't want to give them the time to come in here and speak, shame on you. I think we should open this up and allow several more students or parents to talk. I'm sorry. Uh, they, they deserve it. And if we can't do something about it, then this policy needs to be changed because these are the people we represent. These students right here. And I'm sorry for all of you guys. I really am. And this administration should be sorry. So my heart goes out to yous.
I wanna congratulate yous guys on having a good year. I watched yous guys play, and yous gave it all of. So the coaches, yous guys, just keep it up. You gotta keep playing. It's so important for your career down the road to get this. And when you put it up, it's up there, and everybody notices it. They cheer you on. I cheer you on. I have one more question for the, um, yous guys and the audience. How many people in here knew, know CPR? Can you raise your hands? How many kids? Come on, get them up there. That's good. That's good. 'Cause that way there, you can probably maybe save somebody's life someday, and it's very important that you know that. But I'll be watching you every year for the rest of my life, as long as I can. Thank you.
So I'm gonna keep it short and sweet because we have another executive session after this. But clearly, our policy on allowing the public to participate has failed us. We changed it so that we didn't have people from outside the district come in and hijack our meetings. And because something popped up last night that's not on the agenda, everyone here obviously is from here. And, and we failed them because of that. So as a board, we're gonna have to change that policy. It's gonna have to be done, and I'd say it's gonna be done before the next meeting. Something's gonna have to come about where we can fix it to that the people that belong here are here and can be heard. That's it.
Mr. Saltanik, is there a way, what, I'm sorry? Is there a way right now the board could vote to extend this, uh, override and give some more parents to speak if they'd like to?
You could theoretically waive the policy by board action this evening. I don't think it's a good process to follow, uh, as a board, to waive the policy because in the future, we will not be able, excuse me. Okay, um, uh, I, I think it's up to the board ultimately to decide what it wants to do. I don't think, as a general principle, putting this issue aside, waiving the board policy would make a difference. But with respect to this particular issue, um, and without going into the precise personnel issues, there is, uh, the issue of the renewal of a coach. Well, ultimately, the, the, the coach's contracts don't come before the board for action until the month of typically July or August, uh, under the circumstances. So this is not necessarily an emergent issue that has to happen this evening, uh, under the circumstances. So, uh, the board does have an opportunity to address this issue prior to the issuance of the new contract. So I just wanted to mention that.
No, what I was gonna say, we've done that in the past. We left other ones speak, so I don't know why tonight would have been different.
I'd like to make a motion from the floor that we suspend the policy and allow everyone to, um, have their three minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Let's watch what we're voting for. There's a lot of people here. I don't wanna be here for breakfast.
Yeah, could you, could you, like, qualify what everyone?
Yeah, I apologize. Um, so we had two, that's fair. So we had two people that, um, that spoke.
We had three attend and two spoke.
Yeah, so for twenty-four minutes, I would say, that would be within our policy of thirty minutes.
Just, just from the, just from the process side, you're now setting precedent that you can, this policy can be waived at any time, and any policy can be waived at any time based on nothing. So, but, once again, as Mrs. Dieroff said, be careful if you're gonna start waiving policies, especially, Mrs. Hogan, since you accused me many times of violating policies. I think you need to really, really think about what you're about to do.
It can be waived with a majority, though. So I call, I call for the vote. The motion is to amend the, or suspend the policy for now to allow twenty-four more minutes of public policy for tonight on this topic.
So that would allow technically, as a practical, eight more people to speak? Seven, okay.
We only, only two spoke. One person did not.
I called for the vote, so we have to vote.
As Mr. Saltanik said, I mean, this is great to hear what, I'm sure there's more who would wanna speak. This is something that you said we could bring up again at a later point when we are talking more contractual down the line where I'm one who doesn't like to, to necessarily act right away. So I'd like to hear what they have to say, but this is something that we can actually talk about more.
Not really, though. Not really, because, because, hold on, guys.
It's a contract, though. That's contract.
I understand the contract, and the contract typically pays out between the season.
Right.
But football coaches don't stop at the season. They coach all year.
Oh, I agree.
So for him to still be in contact with the kids, have a lifting program, get offenses and defenses and everything else, you're doing it year-round. So this would be a priority. You can't do it. If you're gonna, if this, if this man's fired, you're gonna have to get it out in a week or two then. We, we need to fill that spot. It's not gonna be done in Ju, July, June. So it has to be done immediately. Just because of this particular. of this particular position.
I, I want to clarify, just, I want to clarify that what I'm asking for is twenty-four more minutes. So, if we have eight people speak and there is still time left over in accordance with policy, more people would still be allowed to speak, as long as, until the twenty-four minutes is, is ended.
We got an up, up or down on that?
He's gonna do roll call.
I only ask how we selecting the eight people? Do we have that information? I, I don't have it. I, I don't have it. I, I can't.
I would say.
We have, we, we've, we've heard two people that's very, very passionate, very, very pro-coach.
Call for the vote.
Can I speak first?
No, call for the vote.
I, I understand some people are allowed to speak. Go ahead, go for your vote.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
I don't even know what the vote is. You allow people to talk, that's pretty broad.
Twenty-four minutes to extend it.
How are we gonna do it?
Yeah.
And like I told us, shut up.
No one said shut up.
Yeah.
Mr. Hemingway? Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Since I don't know how we're doing it, or who's speaking, I'm gonna vote no until I get those answers.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes. Form a line.
First come, first served.
First come, first served. You got twenty-four minutes.
We have people tackling each other.
Can we just remind them, since some have never spoken before, that they have to say their name?
Hey, guys, you gotta say your name. Guys, you gotta say your name, where you're from, and you have three minutes each.
Uh, my name is Jason Oaks. I go to Boyertown High School. I'm a junior. I'm on the football team. Uh, sorry, I'll probably get emotional because I love it. I love Coach Conick. He's always been there for me. I think of him as a second father. He's done so much for me. He's a great guy. I know he puts so much time into this program. And I hate to see him leave us. And I know he'd lead us to a great season. He does everything he can do. I've been playing football for my whole life, and I could say Coach Conick is a coach that has cared most about me and what I'm gonna do in life. Coach Conick really cares about this team. He puts all his time and effort in this team all year round. That's, that's all I really gotta say. Coach Conick's a great guy. He deserves to have the job.
Um, my name's Anthony Genovese. I also go to Boyertown Area Senior High School, and I also play on the football team. Um, I just want to say that what Coach Conick does for us as a team goes so much farther than, um, just us as players and us being football players. And I think everyone really needs to hear about what he does for us as people too. Um, recently, he does, he's done off-season meetings where the focus is on what we want to do after high school, if we want to go to college or play any sport in college. And he wants to do everything he can to help us get there. And I think that just throwing that all out because pal, you know, doesn't like him is stupid. Um, it's terrible. But, I mean, it's, I don't even, I lost my train of thought, but that's all I, like, it goes so much further than just football and us just being football players under Coach Conick. And, you know, it's all about team unity and team dinners and just, you know, he's a great coach. That's all.
My name is Nick Boletta. I'm a Boyertown student. And I'm not a great speaker, so I'm gonna keep this short and sweet. Never in my nine years of Boyertown football, I've had my team feel so unified and as a family, just together. And that's all because of Coach Conick. All I ask is that you don't take this away from me. Don't take my family away from me. Thank you.
My name is Ryder Garrus. I'm a student here at Boyertown. And for me, it felt like for the first time, watching the program for the last five years, playing in it as well, felt like for the first time in years, we looked and felt like a true football team, like a family, like we cared for each other. And that's not the works of just us finally coming together. I mean, there was a lot Coach Conick really put in for us to become a team. The team dinners, you know, he, he made JVs involved with everything. Like, it's stuff with the team that he did to unify us as a team and really made us look like a football team for the first time in years. Everything is, is projecting in the right direction. He does everything the right way and for the right reasons. He doesn't come in here looking for some big paycheck. He came back home to where he's from, his roots, because he wanted to build something that would make everybody in this community proud because he doesn't do it for himself. He does it for each and every one of us kids. And that should be admirable. Just because someone doesn't like him, or because someone feels a certain way about him, doesn't mean that he should be thrown out. You know, he has cared more about us getting to college, may, even academically or through athletically, than anyone that I've ever been around. I mean, our own athletic director has said he doesn't even care about whether we go to sports, we go to, uh, scholarships to play college sports. Doesn't matter to him, but it matters to him. He cares about each and every one of us and our futures. And a lot of us depend on him for help in getting there. There's a lot that he does for this program that a lot of people don't see, and they should start seeing, because he's a great guy, and there's nothing he would give more time into than this program, and it shows.
My name is Colia Savage, and I go to school at Boyertown, and I play on the football team. And when we had no one, when Miller left, we were just empty for months until Conick stepped in. And ever since the first time he talked to us, his motives were school first, family second, religion third, and finally, football. And he's preached that every day, every practice. And he taught us how to respect women, and that's the main priority. And, and he's just been there for us and with us every day. And he will, I imagine, for the rest of our lives, because he's always there. He said he's always there, and I believe him, and I have trust in him. And he does not deserve any of this, because it's Coach Conick. And I love him, and thank you, Coach, and I don't think he deserves this.
My name is Nicholas Panarello. I'm a junior at Boyertown. I'm also a part of the football team. After Coach Miller had resigned, as a team, we felt stranded. Um, and Coach Conick came in, and he didn't just build a team. He built a family, as Oaks said. Uh, he was, he was like a second father. There's, there's only been one other coach that I've ever had in my life that has made me feel the way Coach Conick has. And that's my father. He's taught us more than offense and defense. He's taught us life lessons. He's taught us to stand strong even when we're down. He's taught us to push through even when it seems like we can't. I don't think, in my twelve years of playing full padded football, that I've ever had a coach that cares more than Coach Conick. Thank you.
My name is Giovanni DeDario. I'm a junior at Boyertown Area Senior High, and I also play football. Um, I would just like to say that Coach Conick, Coach Fidel and Coach Lampert and our, and the other coaches have helped out, not only me, but everyone and their families in this program. Um, when, whenever I had problems, Coach Conick was always there for me to help me. And, and he's just done so much for not only me, but this program. And it just hurts to see that he's just risking, that he's just going away. I, you can see that not only me, but my fellow teammates have, is, um, affected by this. And I'm sorry, I can't, I can't speak. I'm sorry, but.
Uh, my name is Gavin Williams. I'm also a junior at, uh, Boyertown, and I play on the football team. Uh, this year was a different year for me. It just felt like Conick brought something, Coach Conick brought something to the table that not a lot of other coaches have brought. And I feel like that I've learned so much this past year, and I don't want to lose that. And I want him to lead this team. And for my senior year, I want him to lead us and everyone to another great season. And I don't want to lose that, and I don't think anyone else here does. And I just really appreciate all of the time and effort he has put into making this program great again. And just as a player, I feel like I got so many more opportunities this year than I have in the past, and I just really appreciate it. So, thank you, Coach Conick.
My name's, uh, Anthony Famulero. I'm a junior at Boyertown High School, and, uh, I also play football. And I just wanted to say that, um, I mean, just like everyone else said, ever since Coach Miller left, I mean, he was a, he was a great mentor for me, and I thought no one could ever replace that. Honestly, I, I really did like Coach Miller. And when Coach Conick stepped in, it was, it was a different level. I mean, I, I've never felt like, or had a coach like this that just really made me love football as much, as more than I already did. I mean, I, I, you can ask anyone in here, football's been my passion my entire life. And, uh, Conick just makes it go higher and higher every single day that I'm with him. And, uh, I just can't believe they're trying to take this away. I mean, at this point, you can't even, you, you can't do it. It's just, he's been there for us every step of the way this season. And, uh, I love you, Coach. Thank you.
More minutes? I'll be brief. My name is Frank Genovese. I'm here as a parent of a player, but I'm also here as a former coach of many of these players. I coached many of the young men in this room from second grade through sixth grade, actually even kindergarten in first grade when they were playing flag football, and they were just young boys. And they've grown into fine young men. And many of these boys have lost at least two seasons of football because of the way things are run here in Boyertown. When they got to the junior high, the seventh and eighth graders got combined. And while many of the other schools had seventh grade teams and eighth grade teams, our seventh graders suffered in not getting playing time, not seeing the field for a whole season. When these boys got to ninth grade, the boys who were rising seniors at this point, they were told there was no longer gonna be a freshman football team at Boyertown, because there would be no reason for it. They wouldn't get enough games. That turned out to be a lie too, as almost every team in the pack, every school, had a ninth grade team. So, the ninth graders really didn't get to play football for another season. And that's part of the problem. We lose too many players in this community because they lose interest, because they don't see the field. And I've seen it firsthand, not only on the field, but in talking to these young men, whether it be after games, whether it be at my home, homes of their parents. And I see the way that they feel about the program. Well, this year, I saw a complete difference in the way these boys felt about the program and the way they approached it once Coach Conick became their coach. They bought in. They bought into his program. They loved football again. They wanted to play not only for Coach, but for themselves and for their teammates. And because of that, the whole became greater than the sum of its parts. And they had probably the best season they've had in five or six years that I can recall. And that's all credit due to this man and the rest of the coaches that he brought in to help shape these young men. And not only as football players, but as young men, to teach them that you can take lessons from sports and make them into lessons about life, whether you're going forward into college, the military, or the workforce. And I think he needs to be commended for that. And I think it's a shame that personal vendettas and petty differences may take this man away from this program that he started to build and not let him continue on his mission. I think that would be an ultimate disservice to these young men in this room. Thank you.
I'm Logan Oaks. I'm a freshman at Boyertown High School. And I just want to say that Coach Conick, the, the things he brought to this team, this is the first year that I've actually felt, um, out of my, like, nine or ten years playing football, that this team's actually been a family, that I've actually been with a family on the team. What he brought back, the old traditions that he brought back, everything he's done for me. And we didn't have a ninth grade team this year, but, um, I, I got to play. And then I know he believed in me the whole year. And it's, uh, I didn't think that I had to impress anyone because I knew he was always there to be with me. Um, and that's, he just, this is the first year that I've actually, like, wanted to play for my team because I, I kind of lost interest out of my last, out of those last three years because that my team hasn't ever really felt like a family like this team has. And that, that's really it.
Upcoming school board meetings will be February twenty-eighth, which will be held here, March fourteenth, the committee of the whole, which will be held at New Hanover Upper Frederick, and March twenty-eighth, which will be back here at Boyertown, or at the Ed Center.
Motion to adjourn.
Hogan motions.
We're going to have an executive session following this meeting on personnel issues.
Thanks for your time.